Everybody will please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Let me introduce the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, with no end.
Call me Jordan, I'm going to call.
Eric, you got it?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go.
Second.
Yes.
Would anybody like to address the council of public form?
My name is Jerry Waldorf, I live at 442 North State Road, and I wanted to talk to the council and see anything about the speeding that goes on, on that road. A lot of people think it's a racetrack. A lot of drivers going 45 to 2 miles an hour. And I know we're a resort community, so we don't want to ticket everybody, it makes a minor fraction, but I think we need to protect the people that are on that road. A lot of children, adults on bicycles, walkers, we've got golf carts, lots of golf carts. We've got lots of kittens on them. I know. And I just think we need to protect it. And I've noticed in a lot of small communities, we have those devices up on the control pole, the digital ones, to tell you how fast you're going and slow down and that kind of thing. And I think that might be a good reminder. We did have a speed limit sign out there that stated that it was been knocked down a couple years ago, never got put back up. And it's just become a problem, I think, a real safety issue for us. Plus, I don't want to present you tonight, but if there's something about the light driveway as far as available, that could really be some...
Right. Yeah, we talked about that last week.
I think there's quite a few streets that people fly, and I know they do on there, but over by where we're at, that you can hear them just flying across the alley.
I think it's really helped on high street where they got the one. Didn't we use, how many times, we didn't have time?
We did, yeah.
Maybe we could look at the back, see how many we get.
In that case...
Just one at a time.
Yeah, just in rough terms, the sign costs about $1,500, and we get a $1,000 grant from our insurance company. And this last year, well, we used for some safety stuff this last one, previous one.
Jerry, the chief of city will figure out, and then we'll talk about the trailer, who's going to figure out how to mount it.
Yeah. That might be a good starting point, if we can get some of those other signs, to get those in. We've got to slow these folks down, because I know none of them want to kill them.
We'll increase the level of awareness. We'll try and set up a radar and run some radar and stuff like that.
Kind of help. If you sit over at DNR, I think they're going to see, to be honest about it. I don't think in fact we do the privacy of them, but we can sit in DNR, they can see it from either direction, really.
Yeah.
So I can just applaud now, from the part of people's railway, they're not, but... You give us permission, that's probably what it'll be, so. We've got lots of room, we can just back it on it. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can some agenda, any additions or corrections? Most of you approved, so I can go call.
Bolton? Beckman? Yeah. Frank?
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
We have a building permit for those 92 results, 259 North State Road, it's been approved.
It has been approved.
Will she be okay?
Second.
Go call.
Hold on.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
We're going to put the city administrator report up to the top, usually it's just some information, but we're going to try it twice and see how it works, and do that next.
Yeah, there is just a few things here, just informational stuff. You see the new, the new black case pickup truck out there. Anyway, turn around and get to the outfitter right away, so it goes to the outfitter on Wednesday, and we're trying a different outfitter, it's called Stivers. And the outfitting cost would be right around $7,000. Because we are, purchasing a light bar is the only, the only piece of equipment that we need in purpose, otherwise we transfer it to another store. Lakeshore Drive Engineer, Dean and I had gotten together for an initial walkthrough with the, with the engineer on Lakeshore Drive, so I know that they are, are working on that. Expect to see some activity on that here in the, as far as plans in the next few weeks. Uvapco grant on that, on that water, we're still awaiting to hear a word about that. You know, so we had finished that, that archaeological study, we have built for that. But anyway, it's pending with the, with the economic development folks. Uvapco is going to, going to really start to get a little, little anxious about having water out there, but their project's coming along fantastic. Their construction is coming along great, so anyway, we're still waiting word on that. The DNR is, is applying herbicide again to the, to the lake, very similar to what they had done in the past. So this time it's basically one, one pass around most of the perimeter of the lake at the ends of the docks. Same, same thing that they did last year. When they applied last year, they only applied half of the amount of chemical that they did the year before. And so we have the remaining half of the chemical left. So the, the costs are actually just only on the base of $4,000 per application. And most of, 75% of that is covered by a grant from the, from the DNR.
When, when's the rule?
On Wednesday, and just expect that it takes Tuesday Wednesday. Just a little update on, on pickleball then, too. I mentioned in the council pack last time that, that the project had received a, a grant for, for some additional funds, so the grants were about $50,000. Now, the Lakeview Foundation had applied for that grant, and they were awarded those funds. And so, you know, you have $50,000 there, $25,000 from the Sack County Endowment, and the city has, has committed $25,000 to it. They have this $49,000 grant that is dollar-for-dollar managed. So what started off to be a little over a $50,000 project now can expand and have some other amenities that might go along with it. So I guess, correct me if I'm wrong on anything here, Vicki, but looking at some additional sidewalks down there to access the pickleball court benches, with the benches, I think, being inside the playing area, right? Is that inside the fence?
I think we're still talking about that.
Look at potentially a shade structure, and then also looking at some lighting. So Jeff, we got some, a couple of proposals on lighting, and this would be 25-foot holes at each corner of the path, so before, for...
Can't we use the lights off the basketball court, on the one side, on the south side basketball court?
We've got one of those basketball lights that's already broke, it likes to spin, so I guess I was thinking to, we always do our green power thing as buying and putting in so many LED lights a year. I bet a lot of them LED lights, LED lights on that course. Talking with them, they're afraid that it's not going to be enough light with one light or two lights off of that. So I, I just, I took it to Van Meter, they had their lighting guys do it, and I took it to Echo and Carol, and they had their lighting guys do it, and that's their two good.
And really, it's, the committee is working on, on some other things, such as location of, of sidewalk, and, and they've come to, I think, consensus on, on this specific technical fence that they'd really like to see, but something that much more up in the air would be anything pertaining to shade. And I think the committee's still working on that idea.
Do you know when the cement's going to be poured? Do you have any idea?
So we, we have the, the net standards we now have, we were, we've been waiting for. And then I talked to the booth about it, that he'd be able to be back in town and work on the project, but he said within the next few years. We'll look for, for some activity down there, and that they would get that, that knocked out relatively quickly, but then that concrete has to cure for 45 days, so you see any action for the next month and a half afterwards.
My concern is with the shade structure, make sure that we approve that and pull it forward if that, see if it was, I don't want to block anywhere, do you, do you mess it after last month, maybe, or last week, just so we look at that?
Yep. That's everything ahead for now.
Okay, we've got to move on to the electric fences we talked about the last council meeting. Anybody to like to bring anything up? Now's the time to come with the podium. Once the council goes to motion on the second amendment, the public just go. If you want to say something, now's the time to do it. Brad?
Yeah. It is... A little bit concerned that why you had the roofless, I'm going to say with the ordinance, there isn't electric fences allowed to come. You know, I'm sure only council members and mayor and Scott, you had grandchildren and stuff, you, you probably wouldn't like electric fences near your house. Maybe electric fences would make for a lot of country. You can sit and preach and preach and preach, your kids not have to go over there, you know? A ball rolls in somebody's yard, it's, just like rolling across the street, they're going to go after it. You know, it's, I guess, after leaving last meeting, you guys talked about safety issues in our areas. You know, for emergency, they're, I understand that, you know? You know, part of our neighborhood, we have big trucks waiting through. I look at this as a safety issue, too, for children and even other people, I mean, you don't know. Kind of did a little research in it, you know, six-volt fence doesn't put six volts on, it puts more than six volts. I don't know how they're built, they're a passer, you know, passers put a lot of voltage on. I, I learned some other stuff in this whole deal, that people do end up in sidewalks when given a low voltage shock. It's some of my concerns. You know, I don't know, Duke, do you know how much joules your fence supports off?
I just talked to electrician right after the meeting, and wrote on, hell, Jacob said, six volts. He said, if those electric fence, those electric with a pole will jump out, would that be good? Six volts like that, you could touch. He said, and it's not going to do anything to you. And so he just told me, and I said, right, another thing is, I guess my feel is, like I said, I wouldn't care if you shut it off, and shut it off in the morning, you put it on at night, and then as far as the ball going over there, you know, I know your kids, I see them out there, you know, but it is 75 feet almost to your, from your doorstep to my garden. Sure, a ball rolls over there, that ball, the way I have the wires, they're not going to cross it. You touch the ball, sure, if they want to play with the fence, well, when I was younger, I never played with the fence. Everybody knew it was hot, you know? I guess you learn less than this ain't going to kill you, like, boy, and I've never heard anybody in my life that got shocked on electric fence that looked like six volt, and the solar fences, you know, I'm talking about little one pan where you plug in. The solar fence wants to be like half inch or less than the electric fence. You can go there if you had grass picking up against it, they'd pop it. This one does not do that at all.
But it's still an electric fence.
Solar?
Yes, but if, according to our code, it's still an electric fence, and that is not, according to our current code...
Yeah, but also there's trespassing on it, too, you know? 75 feet's a long ways going to your yard.
To me, that's a separate issue. I understand what you're saying, but the code, right now, as it sits, says...
I never even knew there was a code until it was brought up here a couple weeks ago about electric fence, or I think before that I had electric fence up for five years, and it was electric, it wasn't solar.
So let me ask you this, I've lost a lot of sleep over this fence, because I see both sides of it. We have, it is in our code, no electrified fences. We talked about it the last council meeting, that that is, was probably designed for permanent purposes. I spent some time this weekend driving around, we've got other electric fences in town as well, but we also have in that same code, no chicken wire. Brad? I can show you pictures of several permanent fences that have chicken wire. So my question to you guys, like Ray's here, Duke's here, Brad's here, the rest of the councilors, can we come up with a solution to do something with, to eliminate the electric fence for the hazard, but yet still allow to have like a chicken wire type fence, or something to keep the deer and the rabbits and that type of stuff out? We have two electric fences in town that I know, but we have at least a half a dozen or more chicken wire type fences, or corrugated. I'm trying to find a soft medium here, or happy medium, I guess you'd say. I get, I get the Garl, Brad Garl's side of it, I got grandkids, I don't know if I want a festival electric fence, I get Jukey Ray's side, got deer running around, I don't want them in there. I also get the fact that if a ball rolls into my garden, I don't want kids walking around my garden either, even if there's no fence there. So how do we keep that stuff out? I'm, I'm looking for some input from you guys that are, have the issues on both sides, of what can we do to change the code the proper way and serve it? Because if we have the code, we don't call it, we're just a code. That's the way I'm looking.
I was just thinking, if you shut it off in the morning, we're not forcing that.
I mean, I can, I can, I've got several pictures I can show the rest of the council on these fences, when somebody says it's temporary, it's not temporary, when it's wooden, two-by-two in the ground, a few feet that staple to the two-by-two, and it's, it's eight feet tall, so.
Dale? I have two solar fences, one for my garden around the back, I've got 18 fruit trees, seven grapes out there, and a large garden. If it wasn't for that, I could not feed the deer out. I've found a lot of money putting this vineyard in under freezing.
I totally agree with you, Ray, but I'm asking, is there a separate or different type of solution to try and keep up? Like, I, I got a picture of yours, and I think yours looks great, and nobody, and you can't really tell it's a fence, but you can see the yellow wire. I know the price and the, the purpose of it, but it is in our code, no electrified fences. I mean, but Scott's last meeting said, well, I think that's more for permanent, these are temporary. Well, I agree with that, it probably was more for permanent, not temporary, but now we've got temporary fences going on, and we've got all kinds of other fences that's in that same code, I'm trying to find the right solution.
But the code is a very specific thing, it's not whether or not it's permanent versus kind of temporary fence.
Correct.
As far as the shock, I have bumped against mine every year, probably eight, 10 times a year, and it's more surprising what it is shock. I mean, hasn't hurt me yet, and I've got a weak heart and everything else.
Volts or what are you doing with this?
There are six volts solar, I don't know what people got, but I would grab onto it, somehow it's a whole thing, I would grab onto it.
But you're an adult.
Yeah, I can see silver.
You're an adult, you're not like a four or five-year-old.
I had four or five when I was younger, custom.
When I was a little kid, probably four or five years ago, my dad grabbed on the fence, had my brother, and held it on his hand, and I held one his hand.
That was to teach you not to touch it.
He's smart enough, if there's a fence there, it's there for a reason, especially if it's on somebody else's property.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I don't know how much research you guys did on these solar-powered six-volt charged fence, and I don't know what, how big these guys have for fencers, but I just pulled up one online, just pulled one random one I had. Six-volt solar-powered electric fence is capable of sending a charge for 25 miles of fence. Okay? It takes, if they rate them on joules, that's how they rate them, and it tests, takes less than 0.10% of a joule to do the job for most fences for an animal. And this one we put out, at its low side, 0.75, up to 1.6. So I know every adult in here is probably, they grew up in a small town, but I'm talking to a special electric fence and got shocked. There's a difference whether you're wearing your tennis shoes or barefooted in the grass. There's a difference if you're 250 pounds or 30 pounds, on what it's going to do you. So maybe you want to take a look at that side of it.
I just know that my fence that I have up there, like I said, like three to five miles, that's a little run.
But the shorter the fence, the less resistance, the better the charge is going to be. Any electrician in your neighborhood has to be up, resistance makes a difference in how long the fence is, and how much guard it's going to put out, so.
This will be the issue.
You're discussing, you're discussing something that's already in ordinance, no electric fence, permanent or temporary, it's in no way... And as you well know, Jim, there's a lot of ordinances that we don't follow the way we're supposed to. Exactly. You're discussing something that's, that's already in ordinance. Right, it's an ordinance.
Safety.
You're not going to, you're not going to abide by your ordinance, and you're wasting your time here.
I shut my fence off every single morning, between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock, don't turn it on till dark at night. And anybody that comes around after night stressing, they, they'd be first to get a shock and a surprise.
So you don't think another type of fence would work for that?
It would have to be eight to 10 foot tall, keep deer out, I guarantee you.
You live down in our neighborhood, you need high fence.
Deer's going to jump electric fence. I like... I could buy one of them, like, some ice cream, you know? You don't bear a dog here.
Hello?
That'll take care of it. And your dogs will be driving you crazy.
Can you say that again?
They make one that makes a high screech, you just put the pods on each end of the garden, makes a high screech, high bitch noise, but it drives everybody's dogs nuts around. Better take the deer away from there.
How far to the fence?
And then I do not know, I just talked, someone told me about it.
But the question is whether the council can draw up some sort of change or just impartially.
I mean, just like Ray said, we shut them off in the morning, put them on at night, let's make deal. So here's my point. We have a, a ordinance. That's stated, Scott, you might have a copy of it, I don't have mine.
Just that I put it, I...
It was in the back of the...
In your memo, just that one, your one paragraph is on there.
So, this is a, this is not... Oh, fences shall be constructed in materials commonly used for landscaping or fencing, such as basinary block, brick, fieldstone, limestone, concrete, lumber, vinyl, or chain link, but shall not include corrugated cheap metal, chicken wire, livestock panels, savage material, or be electrified. So my point, this is my opinion, if we are going to enforce no electric fences, we need to enforce no chicken wire. And that's where, that's where we got to go, isn't it? Or we have to come up with some type of temporary fence ordinance for gardens. And I don't know the right answer. I've, I've lost way too much sleep over this one. I'm looking, Grandfoot, I'm going to leave the dog things, or the school things, the right thing.
And I don't know that neither, Dale, because I never looked into it, you know?
I'm just saying that you've got the code, they have ordinances, it's no different than, when I looked at campers parked in the yard, looked up the water and sewer, we had one of them a couple weeks. Not that I'm against it, I think we should...
We need to reinforce our own.
That's my point. If you're going to have them, we should enforce it. If we're not going to enforce them, there's no sense having it. And if we need to change it for this type of situation, we need a sensible answer that fits in. That's my opinion.
Well, you have anything against it, Brad? Shut it off or not?
I'm expecting violation of ordinance.
Yeah, because you just don't want to be a good neighbor, because, I mean, you're a good neighbor, don't go over to, go and watch them put it up and don't say nothing, and then comes up here to talk to Scott, you just said something, I'd shut it off.
Most people responsible know that they don't want to be, but it's good that way.
Yep, that's what I think.
I just wonder, if there is special meeting, it has, or not a meeting, but a committee that wants to do together to change, remember, I mean, change, change ordinances, I'm not familiar with city hall rules. If you need to make any changes...
That's the action of the city council?
That's the action of the city council.
Do you do it right now, something like this?
Well, I have a question about chicken wire. We would put it on the agenda, once we came up with it.
Because I know some people that, I mean, for years I had chicken wire around my garden, and I didn't know there was an ordinance that I couldn't have it there, because that's the only thing that keeps rabbits and deer out of it.
I think we need to look at this a lot more, because it is such a...
And I know what you're saying about, you know, I had to touch an electric fence when I was a kid, but not all kids are the same, and I have, I will speak for myself, I have an autistic grandson, and if he's out there in that yard and he does not know better, because you try to train him, but he goes out of some, his yard and into somebody else's, and that fence is there, I don't want him being touching that, I don't. So...
Yeah, but you don't want this autistic kid in your garden either, neither.
I understand that.
So, and I'm just talking out loud here, trying to give a little common sense back and forth. I don't want kids touching electric fence either. In the meantime, until we come up with a proper ordinance to enforce for wire and fences around gardens, because obviously we don't have the proper ones today, can we do something temporary where it's off at 6:00 in the morning, not on until after night at night, and it's flagged and, and, so they can see it more obvious for the safety of children and stuff? Is that, would that serve until we come up with something? Does that make sense to you?
I know, but you have it six, so it's not seven.
You need to put it on a timer.
That might make sure that no more are going up, you know?
Yeah, I would say...
It's not electric, it's an electric one, I could.
I know of the two different people.
Maybe about another couple months of the overwind, because I don't touch it off the garden.
Until, because I don't think this is a five-minute fix.
No, it's not.
And, I mean, this is a two-week deal that's been going on now, but I would like to see, like, so Ray's is yellow, you can see that wire pretty well, Jukey's is not yellow, so if there's some way to hang some warning signs somewhere around it, you know, am I making sense, Juke?
I'm just shutting it off in the morning, I'm just making sure it's on.
But I'm saying, even...
I'll put a red flag by the, by the, where I turn it on.
But it's not just where you turn it on. So what I'm saying is, the dredge, for example, that's the pipe in the water, and there's all kinds of warning things up where that dredge pipe is going.
I know, but I see...
It's not, it's not just where the dredge is at, okay, follow what I'm saying, it's a safe scenario. So that fence goes all the way around there, not just where your power box is at, and I don't know what the corner is in the middle, but does it take once to put up a little sign that says, warning, electric fence do not touch? The kids can't read it, but a warning sign, you know, you go by, you go down to a...
Yeah, but you guys want me to shut it off or on in the morning? We're on all the time.
I'm just making some...
Because I was, but I was thinking, just, when I go, before I go to work, shut it off, and then when I come home, after I get done bowling, and then put it on.
Do that also. I mean...
Well, then how do you know it's on or off?
And what time, what time is that, then?
Seven.
2:00 in the morning, seven?
So, at night at night?
I mean, we need to, we need to figure out a solution, a temporary solution until we get a perfect one.
Yeah, maybe my garden will be done by then, I'll have a lot of vegetables off, and then I'll shut it off.
How long, how long do you typically have a garden, I think that should be the...
That's spring, that's spring to fall, just like any garden you put in.
I have to use my one fence over my fruit trees all year, otherwise the deer would come in and eat the bark off and the trees.
So, on your fruit trees?
But that's way back by the DNR, you know, there's nobody back there.
On your fruit trees, do you shut that off during the day as well, or just the one in the front?
When I go down to garden, yeah, usually, but it's, I shut my front one off when I get up at, usually 5:00, 5:30, and the other one, I get down to the garden by 7:00, something like that.
So, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, the, the select the fences are code, right? Instead of ordinance? That's essential. So as soon as we start saying that we're going to make exceptions right now, before we change the code, basically you're telling everybody in the public that if they got a disagreement, get something in the code, they're going to be able to come here and complain to you guys, and you'll be able to change it to fit their, their needs.
And we're, and we're just going to be doing a vicious circle, every single...
So, I'm going to ask you, as a council, if we're going to make these folks remove their electric fence, are we going to make everybody in town remove their chicken wire? Because what's good for one is good for the other, until we come up with a viable solution. And let me tell you, there is a lot of chicken wire fences in this town. Some are permanent, some are temporary.
Some are on peony bushes, and there's a lot of chicken wire.
And I think it's the general public, just like these two folks here, did not know electric fences were allowed on the chicken wire.
So here's our dilemma, we have this ordinance, what's it going to take to come up with a new ordinance next council meeting? It's going to take to come up with a new ordinance next council meeting. Then it's going to take three weeks after that. So what Chris is saying is we got an ordinance, we got to follow it. So right now, no electric fence.
You don't, I don't care if you have one or not and the longer, that's what the council decides.
Right.
I'm just looking at where we're at right now and what's going to happen in the future when we start doing it.
What's the fine if you, if they get, have a fence, what's the citation? They'll say $10 fine or whatever.
Uh, for the fence, I think it's up to $750 with any violations. If you know it's second, it's up to $100.
Do we have a code that says you have to have a sidewalk in front of your house? What, who knows before seven?
There's some of them out there that don't, you know, it's, it, uh, the other thing about, about this code, I guess, is that it's zoning code. It's not a, it's a zoning code. It's not a code. You know, codified because of the ordinance. Yeah. Um, so, and then, and when you talk about the, the notion of, of temporary or permanent, that's, that's, that's an important distinction, at least in the zoning code there. Because the, you know, the regulations kick in would be like if you're going to issue a permit or something or not, whether they would meet the, the, uh, the regulation. And if it, if it's a temporary something that we just wouldn't even know that it's there. You know, if we just wouldn't even know it's there.
Yeah, but we, we should have known if a collective fence is up. As a, as a city, you should know one of those. That's how I feel.
We had to walk, we had to walk around every yard.
We can, well, I, I realize that, but at the same time, you know, maybe if we were enforcing this, we would, we would know. You know, and we're not, we're not enforcing it. That's the whole issue. We have it on the books, but it's not being enforced. And if we're not going to enforce it, then yes, then we could need it. We'll come up with a different.
Well, if I had a garden and I wanted to be abandoned, I would, I'd want to have to put up some type of chicken wire type fence. But we can't just, I think that's something that needs to be looked at. We don't think we have the right answer tonight. So I think, I'll make a motion to table the electrified fence issue. And we can put a deal together to come up with the right.
But in the meantime, those will be shut off during the day, right?
Yep.
My note is.
And, and you'll find some way to mark yours at least that.
No, I'll, I'll go to sign up, say Brad's here.
Well, you don't need to do that.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, you want to get immediate or something?
I would like to.
Two people over there, you have to, uh, so do you do the exact?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, so, to table and, and create a committee? And who might our committee be? Tammy.
And Dale.
And Mike? Mike went too sad about it?
All right, I'll do it.
Mike doesn't say too much about it.
I can, I can see both sides. I want to see a healthy garden, but yet I want to see the safety of the kids for once.
Yeah, I guess the other, the other way to look at this then is, I mean, you're welcome to have a council committee if you'd like. We have a committee to refer to plan on. But, uh.
Well, I think, I think it should be the council committee and.
Don't let the council say on there.
We have to have a file saying, I think, with this conversation, that everybody understands what's going on. We've got to start enforcing our ordinances or not happening, that's my idea. And this one's a little, should I say a little different? It's a little different because there's, I'll bet you there's fifty people down there not applying to this one. And that's just a wild guess. I drove around this night for half hour and I bet they got eight.
You know, the truth is, we could probably go to every house in town and fight some violation.
Right.
Right.
We'd have to have probably two full time officers going on. Just keep that in mind.
Right, yeah. I think, I think we need to have ordinances that make sense.
Yeah. I agree.
And I don't know if this, I think this makes sense for a permanent fence, but not a temporary fence or a permanent.
I'm curious about what the thought process when they came up with this one, that was an issue.
This was, uh, you know, we read it, zoning code around in 2000. It seems like there might have been altered once since then, a few years later. It's, it's been a long established code. But certainly from, from implementation, it would be more on the, uh, on the permanent structure side of things and, and that someone would come in and request a permit. And, and based upon the criteria of the ordinance would determine whether they get a permit.
Let's go. I had a lot more to add on that.
All right, go ahead.
I'd rather look at woven fence. I'd like to see a long field, a long road edge. Or chicken wire fence.
But they're also our code.
Yeah, but I need to, you're going to change something.
Please give your input to me.
I would suggest that you look at other city codes.
Yeah, I'd say that same thing. Go call.
Okay, so this is, uh, the motion is to table and create a council committee, council committee is getting Mike. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Well, you'll shut it off during the day, that's.
Yeah, I will.
And will be turned over what time?
Nine, at nine.
Okay, we have to, you know, thanks everyone for, Historic Preservation Commission, would like to discuss the stone piers.
That's me. Uh, that in January I was here and somebody mentioned something, needed to check the stone piers. You're right. Well, they're in need of repair. And so we have started checking into, we contacted the mason, the same mason who was here the first time. Came down, inspected what he could see and said, yes, it needs work. The grouting is crumbling apart between the rocks. There's, um, some good things, I mean, there's good things to say. The landings on some of the, on some of the, uh, the stone pier that they have the council's on, the two landings and the walls that were there that were really bad shape last time, he said they look fine. Uh, we're concerned of the chunk missing out of the other stone pier. Um, a lot of the, there's some cracks in the cement. And it's just from wear, from Iowa winters is what they're saying. We don't know what that looks like underneath the water muddle. And the mason said that whomever we get to an engineer of, as we researched this, whenever we secure an engineer, we should contact our mason also that can go down and check the rocks underneath. The last time it was done, it was not, he felt that that was not addressed. And when they did build the copper dams and pulled that water back, there was a lot more damage under the water lying in water. That's what we know. And, um, so we went back in the minutes, because everybody knows, you know, this started back in 1996, if you recall, and we didn't get the project done until 1999. It takes a while. We need to know, um, if we need to contact the DNR again. They were involved in it the first time. So we're going to have to visit them. And, uh, I know there was an officer here that, that worked with us. And, uh, we've been looking into, uh, possible engineers and we figured the DNR may have someone. But we also know that the stone piers are on the National Register of Historical Places. And in order to do that, uh, in order to be there, uh, they have a little bit of criteria we need to follow also. Now, Mr. Henry, who came down and inspected the piers, he was the one who picked them back in 1999. He is willing to come back and do that again. His son, he's getting to the age where he wants to retire. Can't blame him. And his son has gone through a kind of hardship and, uh, he's willing to work with his son if we decide to do it. I said, well, it's not going to be something we do this year because it takes a while for us to write grants. And, um, I know last time we got a $75,000 one, when we, we got, we're looking in the, um, some of the other ones like the Save Our Structure Grant, uh, there's Racy Grant. I mean, we're going to look into all of those and see. The, if you recall back in 1999, this project cost $177,000. It's not cheap. And both, both piers need to be done. So we're back here again, just to let you know what we're going to be doing. It's going to take, like, is there any plan? Getting things started with the DNR. So I was just wondering, Scott, you were here back in 99. Is there a reason why the DNR, is it because it's a state lake that they have to be involved? Okay.
It occurs to me like the DNR's going to want to be involved here.
So that's what, we just want to let you know that it has been addressed. We are working on it, it's just going to take some time and a lot of grant writing. So, any questions?
Yeah, there's a, there's a stone pier down there. I know there's signs that says, don't dive in. Is that, is there any signs in there about no swimming involved? So to keep them off there, from crawling over. You know, I'd say put a no swimming sign on there also to keep them from, I'm just curious.
Because you do have the, I think it just says no diving, rocks, rocks in shallow water. And that's the one sign that's there.
One of the corners that, you know, they were crawling around, they're kicking rocks off, they're strolling off the pier into the water. So if we put the sign up, I don't, we'll stop them, but it is. Some people also tell you to get fixed.
On that north pier, there is one corner that's believed up to be bad.
Walk down there real quick.
So it's just, you know, we're, we're hoping that, um, hoping that because, you know, in 1996, 98, well, 99, when they actually did the repair work the first time, that was the first time that it had been addressed since they had been built in the 1930s. So we're hoping since like it hasn't been as long, that maybe under the water, we're not going to have the deterioration as, yeah, as bad as it was. Um, if you look on the stone piers, in the grouting, you can really see some pretty good sized cracks. Then we talked about maintenance between, hopefully, um, it almost isn't usually maintenance as far as, um, there's just some special type of, of caulk that you can put in there and it will keep, just kind of keep it longer. So we're looking at it, checking it over and just going to take a process.
What condition or whose help, who does work the grant, is that an ordinance committee or?
Oh, well, Becky Tanner did the force back in the 1990s and I don't think she does anymore. Connie Eaton, I guess, writes grants. We, John Samantha's written some for us that we've gotten money for. I mean, we've done a few of our own too. Um, so we just done.
Have you started that process still?
No, we did, we, we just started this, we just had it inspected, was that a weekly throw stack?
Yeah, well, we can do it.
Yeah, so we just kind of wanted to know how, in what kind of condition. He picked up some of the grouting and he could just come running in. Sands, you know, some of the rocks are not those hard. So it is what it is. Easy made rock. So just to give you an idea of what's going on.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Yeah, one other thing, I just look quite a while here, so you give them the two minutes on, uh, on the mineral springs.
Oh.
I just have one, one thing about the piers. I thought we talked about maybe doing some temporary work, but well, we, you know, the, obviously the whole part is going to be huge, but some of the, didn't we talk about that?
That's what she was talking about, about the drought.
We're going to maybe try to do some of that.
Or to give them another drought of caulk. That, that there was some special mason recall that, that we needed to.
Mr. Henry was, him mentioning that. Uh, you want to say anything about the mineral springs?
No.
Gee, thanks, Vicki. Well, the park board and the HPC got together, we went down to the mineral springs. And, um, it needs work for sure. And we're thinking about scraping the paint and getting that repainted, uh, maybe contracting that job done. Uh, we hit there's some, uh, washout along the cement that needs to be, we thought about putting a liner there and adding some rock and then, you know, bigger rocks and some dirt there to keep it from running off again. Uh, just kind of addressing some of the issues there. At, when the mineral springs was first put there, it had a tile roof on it. And if you notice now, it's asphalt. Uh, we, we did have someone come that does reconstruction work and their bid on it was $21,000 to repair it. Um, because the bench inside there is the original bench that was put there when the spring was working. And we'd like to restore it. And you'll notice there's green tile and there's some cement work that needs to be done. But I think the first initial thing, if I'm not Vicki, we talked about painting first was kind of the first foremost. And we're going to work together with the park board and getting bits on finding a good outside exterior painting and contractors and all that. And that's where we're at right now.
Great.
Thank you.
We're busy group.
Yes. Oh, by the way, we digitized all the lengthy resorts from the beginning to 1981. And we took donations for that. Uh, we caught it covered. We reached over $10,000 for that. So great. We are, so you can go to Lakeview Library webpage and they have a link there. And you click it, you can look at the resorts, the Chronicle, the Saks Sun, Cabalite Blade, and any other thing they have on there.
And don't be scared if you have a little trouble.
And it's a little, they, they've been working on the site, it's a little small ones and a lot. But it's a lot of fun.
Thank you. That caulk, is that something that you guys can do, you need to set things up? How?
Yeah, I mean, want to probably get the mason back here with his specific product and.
Talking about the stone pier.
Have, have him do a portion so that we can, so we can really see what's involved.
Is it out of the water, sir?
Right.
Is it coming out of the water, sir?
Take in caulk.
Okay, we'll move on. We got options for surface enhancing street. Do you want to hear Newshark come on here?
Uh, this is Tracy. Uh, he did our streets on the sixth and seventh from Midwest Code. Hi, Tracy Thompson with Midwest Code in Millvale, Iowa. Dean asked me to, um, so we had a bunch, we had about 650 tons of millings that came out of the streets that we did and, uh, what was the best way to, to use them? And he mentioned Hanson Street. So I ran some numbers, we talked about several options, uh, with the millings and then also with, uh, some grading, seal coat, and then also asphalt paving. So with the, it's approximately from Fifth Street, from the concrete apron, uh, on Fifth Street north up to, there's a, there's a concrete slab out in front of those salt sheds, uh, those who put, that's where I measured to, it's approximately 1200 feet. Um, down closer to Fifth, it's 26, goes to 28. I mean, you can get wider and wider and wider. For the most part, I'd say it's about 28 all the way through there. I don't know what you want to do when you get up to like the city shed. There are concrete aprons for people's driveways that you're going to have to match with whatever you do, whether you're paving it or replacing the millings. That grade can't really be changed. And then the apron at the seventh, you know, I, those things, I don't know if you want to match, tie into those or if we're just going to go straight like 28 feet wide. So I just basically used the 1200 by 30 feet wide and that would cover. Uh, it might, it, I'm not, it's approximate. And with the millings, it's, it's, it doesn't really matter. No grade is going to be changed. With the millings, what we would do is we'd take the millings from where they're sitting right now, bring them over and place them on just right on top of what's there right now. And then we would process them with a recliner, which is a big, uh, tiller for asphalt. And there's chunks like this where when we get done, there won't be any chunks and it'll be nice fine material and we'll regrade it and recontact it. Nothing's really going to change, that material's just going to go. Uh, it's going to be about two and a half, I would say somewhere between two and three inches thick is what we ended up with. say somewhere between two and three inches thick is what we've ended up with. It's not very thick to, to be put in a reclamer. I mean, typically, we run those reclaimers six to eight, even twelve, fourteen inches thick. But we could do it if it's around three inches. We've done it before where there's a door, I don't want to get too much into it, but there's a door on the back and, and we can close it, so it would just keep, if there's, if a big chunk passes the drum, it can't get out, goes around and it keeps beating it up until it's, until it's, you know, three eighths minus. Um, so, to do that, basically, we, the city wouldn't have, you guys wouldn't have to do anything. We'll bring a loader, we'll load it on trucks, move it over on there, then we'll move a motor grader up, we'll reclaim it, regrade it, recompact it. That's it. That bid is roughly eighteen thousand dollars. And you use, you're getting rid of all your millings. And it'll keep the dust out, and it'll add to the base. That's about it. I mean, it's, it's granular material. It's going to puddle just like a river. So, it's, it's a way to use your material, um, and kind of keep the dust out. There are other things you can do after you put the millings down. You could put a rejuvenator down. That helps fog seal it. Uh, I personally would probably skip all that if you ask me. Waste of time. Um, option number two would be to seal coat it. Um, so, seal coat it, it's dust controlled, a lot of little towns have it for their streets. That's all that's theirs, seal coat. There's maybe eight inches of seal coat that they've put down over the last twenty years or so, or longer. Um, so, one course of seal coat, again, all we're doing is fine grading this to enough to put seal coat down. There's no major grade changes. It's basically going to, the way it drains right now, it's going to drain that way again. Um, a single course is roughly sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Um, that's, so four thousand square yards are four dollars and fifteen cents a square yard, is sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars. A second course is four thousand square yards at seven fifty. The second course gets cheaper because we don't have to, the grading is, we don't have to grade it for the second course. So, that's why the second course is cheaper than the first course.
What was the second course, Billy?
Well, I, it's, it's seven fifty for two courses. Four fifteen for one course. Um, and that's, so we'll shoot, we can, we can shoot emulsion, we can shoot a cutback. There's really not much of a difference. Um, I'd probably use it, uh, an emulsion, which is a CRS2P. It's all DOT materials. Um, the aggregate that you use is up to you. Um, we can bring in quartzite, which is the pink aggregate from some balls, or we can get it from right over here wall right.
Question for you.
At least billings. We talked about you can do it three inches, four, three five, six inches, whatever. So, when you come in and like, you came in the middle of these streets that you just did, can you not take them millings and re-put them back in and reuse them on the street? Is that saving the regular street in the future or?
Well, you can, you can, but here's what you do. It gets expensive.
Is it more expensive than just the initial stuff?
Well, I'm guessing what you're, what you're saying is, could we use the millings underneath on another street that you were to pave? So, what, here's what you would have to do. You would, is, you have curb gutter most everywhere.
Right.
So, you would have to mill out, say you have four, well, yeah, you do have, I'd say you're, you don't have quite five on what I've seen. So, you have to be kind of careful when you mill out, if you have, say you have four inches of pot mix there, you're going to mill three out, which is what we were going to do. You're only leaving yourself an inch of material to hold truck after truck after truck after truck, you know? I mean, you destroy subgrades that way. And so, basically, what you would have to do is, you could save those, those millings are good. There's no dirt in them because there's, we don't, we didn't go down to the dirt. But then you have to overexcavate the subgrade, which means take another three inches of, of dirt and whatever's left of the asphalt. Then take those millings, bring them back, put it, it's, it's very, it's just, it gets costly.
So, it's more costly to do that than it is to just put through asphalt that way? That's my question.
Yeah. Because you're still going to have to cover it up with the asphalt. So, I, you know, ideally, these millings are great for, for roads that, that maybe you're trying to build up or, or don't have curb gutter, and you have room to raise them. And that's ideal. Um, you could incorporate them in to what's already there. I don't recommend doing that because all you're going to do is take the material that's already there, mix it in with this and that, you've got really not so hot material. Anything you do granular, whether it's millings or gravel roads or whatever, unless they get sealed up, they're going to keep doing it. They're just going to keep, they're going to keep getting puddles, and they're going to get soft spots and fail. Um, I did put a number together on, on paving. So, that same four thousand square yards, and that's approximately, it's about eight hundred or nine hundred tons. At a hundred and fifty-eight bucks a ton is a hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred dollars. That is, again, we're not going to change the grade tremendously. I mean, we can, Dean mentioned, well, you want to put crown in it. Get crown all the way down through there, which you can do it in some places, but some places that you can't because you have to match some of the existing concrete structures. Uh, and even though it looks like, oh, it's easy to say, let's just put a crown in this, and, uh, over a thirty-foot wide road, you might be dropping that outside, uh, a foot just to get two percent slope.
Did you say you're going to put nine hundred tons there? Is that approximately four just there?
That is. It's two, two lifts of two inches. So, basically, we come in and either, either we water it real well, get it soft enough. The road is hard. I mean, it's, it's very hard. It's a great subgrade. Um, we have to water it just to get it to where we can cut it with a motor grader to fine grade it. Or we could bring our mill back in, and we can trim it with that. And basically, we can set slope on that, and we'll get exactly what we want. I mean, we could set it, we'll paint the center line and then say we want two percent slope. We can cut two percent slope in it, but you might, by the time, on the, on the east side, by the time you get down to where you're, you know, on the outside edge at four inches, you, you might be more than four inches. If you're running off slope. So, say you're going to, you're trimming it, you want to get two percent, you're going to take, say, an inch of the center line that you're cutting two percent. I could probably tell you exactly what it'd be if you shot it, but I didn't. But you can set the mill at two percent, which you might need to keep, and then you're going to be, then you've got a bunch of dirt you need to move after the fact. And we're, I mean, we can backfill and shoulder and that kind of thing, but we're not, we don't have scrapers, you know? So, um, but that is, is get it, get it prepped, get it ready, lay two inches, back back up, and lay two more inches. And that's a hundred and forty-two. Um, like I said, it's nine hundred tons approximately, a hundred and fifty-eight. That's about, I think that's about eight or nine dollars a ton cheap for than we did the project we just did.
So, we have a replant.
Well, there's not as much milling. I, there's not as much milling. So, instead of milling, taking three inches out, we're just basically kind of trimming. So, it saves, saves you some money there, but, uh, those are kind of the three options, I think, that you asked about. I mean, I, to me, eighteen thousand dollars to, to move the millings and process them, and you can chip seal it. You can put one, you can, you can trim it and put one course of chip seal on, and the chip seal is cheaper.
So, what's, what's the, uh, if you put, just put that chip seal over that basin that's there right now, knowing that it's an industrial area and you're getting some heavy traffic back and forth, what's the, what's the expectation for that seal?
Three years, maybe. Three and a half. See, I wouldn't do a seal. We almost never put a silk, uh, a single course seal coat over a granular base anymore ever because it doesn't last.
It's never gonna last.
Because it doesn't work. And everyone asks for it because they see the number, and it's always half the price. And so, do it the cheapest way, and then the next year, they go, hey, happiness fell apart. Um, it's because we needed to shoot, you know? But I don't know. It's, it's, those are, I, Dean asked me to come up with these numbers, so that's, that's what I have, so.
Does your company also do, like, tend to do crack sealers and stuff like that?
We have one crew, so we have two crews. My crew does all of the milling and paving, and then we also do, um, chip seals and slurry sealing. Um, and then we have another crew that does just DOT, well, they'll do it for, for the towns, but for the most part, they're on DOT job, but, uh, crack filling.
So, can we get an estimate from you to crack fill streets?
Have you?
Though I said, give me.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And have we?
We have, we have talked about crack sealing yet, but, yeah, I mean, we have one crew that's all they do. That's all they do.
And we receive, getting something like that?
We'll get you, yeah, whatever.
You know, we're telling?
Right.
But, you know, it's, the other streets, there's a lot of streets in our town that need some crack sealing to prevent further damage throughout the area. Maintenance, and our crew, by the time they get started, they get called away to do something in the repair office, to have them supervised, I should say supervised over, however you want. But the proper word is for you guys to come in, go down this street, crack seal it, go down the next street, crack seal if you guys believe.
Yeah, if you just tell, I mean, there's a lot of towns I go through, and, I mean, they don't even, they just say, we want a crack seal, go look at all. I mean, they don't even tell me what their priority, how they want a priority, that's it. I just look at them and say, this one needs it, don't, don't waste your money on this one.
I would like to hear it.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of streets.
I like your attitude.
Some people will just smear crack sealing material. I mean, it's, it, there's, if it's too far gone, I'm going to tell you, don't spend your money on it. You can patch it or, or chip seal it, or, but, yeah.
I would really like to see some of that people come back and brush it, and it's not really good, or, or if we decide to do video, any of this stuff, do you have the time to work it?
Uh, the crack sealing bunch could come in October, which you wouldn't really want a crack seal itself in October. It's a, it's a good time to do it. October, any time from October until snow flies is a good time to crack seal. And we could do it, we could do it before that, but we could do it after October. Our, my group, um, is getting close to, to saying, uh, no, here on out. We're, we're very close.
So, you, would you have the time to kind of look at the streets and?
Oh, yeah.
Does it with her?
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
I would, do I need to make a motion about that?
No.
Okay.
Well, we, we, I'll get with Dean and.
So, if we wanted to do Hanson Street for seventeen thousand dollars, we'd have to make up a name for it every single?
No, I mean, it's just, sooner goes better, you know?
Eighteen plus six plus six.
It's only a, uh, the chip seal thing, we come up and prep it one day, and we shoot it the next day. The millings would probably, probably take us a couple days, a few less people, but the paving would take quite three days, so.
We'll kick them all around.
Okay. Thanks for the opportunity.
No, thank you.
I know, if you, if the council heard, heard from us, talked to Tracy beforehand, we've got the bill for them having done the three blocks here in town, and, uh, the total was at like ninety-six thousand. Anyway, it's about six thousand dollars.
There's thirty.
What it cost us.
There's thirty.
And, and I tell you, the project, yeah, it's good. Very, very good.
John, I have a question.
Hanson Street.
So, what action is the council going to take on Hanson Street? What is their plan?
We've got to discuss it.
We want to talk about it.
You're going to talk about it?
I was just starting to do.
Is it going to be on the agenda next time?
I don't know. I just was starting to ask a question, and you interrupted me, I'm sorry.
I love it.
I'm sorry.
Well, we're going to see what we can do. We're trying not to kick it down the road. Not going to decide tonight.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, you know, because we've been talking about it actually for several weeks, several weeks. Um, and so I just wonder.
We know we have a huge problem. There's going to be the going on, so.
Well, that, you know, there's, even without the junkyard development, there's a million dollars worth of new development down there. I mean, you know, your taxes coming in on there are a huge amount, what they, what they will be from what they were.
Two, two, two things. Anyway, we go ahead. It's not in our budget, but doesn't mean we can't do it. Second thing is, if we're going to pave that street, is the property owner's going to pay for it?
I'm not asking to be paved. I'm interested in this milling he wants to do.
So, is the property owner's going to do that?
Well, I, that's.
I'm asking that question.
That's an option.
Typically, one of the goals would.
Sunset Drive we did.
They asked you to do it.
Well, then, well, we're just asking to do it. They're building it.
One, yeah, there's a two different cycles. But I'll go ahead.
But that's, that's fine. Just let me talk it out loud. I've actually had you.
Well, you know, I realize it depends on who you are, but, you know, you're not going to make these people pay for Fifth Street when we did that, or Seventh Street when we did that. I'm not against some kind of assessment. I don't know what the other property owners would be like. I'm just telling you that there's been a million dollars spent down there in the past two years.
I'm just asking a question.
Thank you. Thank you, it's your time. Say, um, and I told Jennifer that I'd passed this one. Did everybody get that, that group text from Jennifer about?
Yeah.
That was, that she was, was purchasing that duplex and, and would, would speak in favor of, of some type of district service.
Okay. Chief, you want to talk to this stuff, the police department?
So, obviously, we had our committee here, um, some big things like the policy change of wages, kind of that kind of thing. Um, one of, one of the big things was residency. We're looking at a thirty-minute response time if you're on call, and within an hour to business. Uh, the pay, uh, we're looking at non-certified starting out at seventy percent of the chief's wage, and then, uh, in order to get that, we came up with dividing that up over the next three years. So, it's not like when they get, they can spread that out. Uh, same way with, uh, once you graduate the academy, you build to seventy-five percent of that wage, it'd be the same thing, you'd split that up in three years. And a top out pay, year three after year three, uh, eighty percent of the chief's wage, and we split that over the next three years. Um, and then, uh, assistant chief, looking at him, like, uh, eighty-two point five percent of the chief's pay. And then we, we went over some policy changes as far as equipment and that kind of stuff. Just updating our equipment list to make sure we're not wrong. and then we, we went over some policy changes as far as equipment and that kind of stuff, just updating our equipment list to make sure we're not wrong, so anybody could, I mean, so maybe, does anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, um, just have the council take a look at page six first, and this would be, this would be what you're talking about as far as, as, as equipment, anything, anything that is underlined would be proposed to be a new addition to the policy. Okay, and the, the top, uh, the top part of that, that's kind of been provided already, it's been in the policy, uh, but a big change would be to have two rifles, um, one, so we'd have one rifle with, with each patrol vehicle, and then the middle of the page shows that policy on, on personal protection.
Yes, my understanding, the past owner officers have purchased some of that stuff themselves.
Yeah, a lot, I mean, a lot of our guys, they, they have their own stuff, and they, and they're told they can get what they wanted, or what they needed, so we just brought their own stuff over.
So who's in charge, would you, would the chief be in charge of the personal, the equipment stuff?
Yeah, well, what I, I got a form that I, that I got filled out now, that I'll have the list of there, whenever we leave issue, so that way, when they come in, we can mark their main acquisition, when they go to turn in, when they leave, if they leave, then we mark it off.
You know, you've got some, obviously, the new responsible, the new responsible reembers, whatever, um, unless there's a damage or something like that, needs to be replaced, obviously, I would like to do that, but, yeah.
Question, we have three things, we want to change policy, right, I thought you were doing the wages, and we have to do the assistant chief.
I got, I got a question, so, I, I know you had this in last, uh, council packet, but like, the the wages and these percentages and certification stuff, what, is this something you found somewhere, or is this where you come up with this, or?
Typically, a lot of, a lot of departments go off based off of either the sheriff's salary or the chief's salary, so that's kind of what I'm basing it off of. Usually, a top pay, most departments, it's eighty percent of like the chief's or sheriff's salary.
So is this, and you get, you got this from a different town, or we got?
Yeah, I, yeah, all the department, a lot of departments go that way, but.
And is this being proposed because to help get them retired, or?
It's being proposed for retention reasons, but, um, this new contract that they signed, they get three percent over the next three years, like I said in July, that, I think there's a lot of departments that are gonna get huge spikes in pay, so we're gonna be completely out of it. So my goal is to try to get them a little bump now, so we're not completely waiting high down the future, and really kind of puts us right on board where we should be.
I just know that some of our other benefits are a couple ways, and that's what I'm just looking for.
What will that?
Helping with one project there.
And a lot of millennials, if you ever do any research on it, millennials don't care about that.
Yeah, there's still costs to us, where they care.
I, I know, but, but we're gonna get people, retain people, those are the ones we're getting now.
So are you saying that we can change that, their policy, to help the job purpose?
I'm, it's not up to me.
I'm just asking a question.
No, it's not up to me.
Because if it doesn't matter, what would you change?
I'm just telling you what, you know, what it's gonna take, you know, you know, you want a police department or not, that's what I'm asking, so if everybody wants a police department, then we gotta try to keep up with the times the best we can.
All I know is, I'm, I'm watching, I'm, 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 basically, apparently, like, what, what do you have to do to, number one, hire a new employee, to attract them, to retain them? There's no magical answer out there, you know, um, you gotta try something, I guess, is, is the way I approach this, is go ahead, because, because what we're currently doing isn't working, um, I know sheriff and sheriffs have the same problem up there, with trying to get new people, um, that doesn't get a lot of that, and why is that, nobody has a nice, boring answer right now.
Well, I guess my biggest thing is, how many people have we gone through each year in the past four years, how many people have left? Since I've been in the county, every year is at least one or two that gone, and you're talking three, four main department. Recently, it was Brad and Colin, and before that, it was Jeremy and Michelle, obviously, we lost retirement to Royce, Brandon was here a year, he was left, you know, um, Alex was prior to that, uh, so, I mean, alls you're doing is hiring guys who leave, whatever.
They look at the loss.
Who do we go with?
Well, obviously, some went for better jobs than hiring paying jobs, you know, Brad did, he didn't get the chief job, he was leaving, well, he gets paid more money down in there, so he set up pretty good. Alex went to town for more money, Michelle left because, I, I don't know why Michelle left, to be honest with you, but obviously, she wasn't happy here, but, you know, um, Royce retired, obviously, we didn't know that, but he hasn't volunteered to come down and buy some more part-time, I'd like one of the other people to volunteer, but why not go with the chief, that'd be a perfect opportunity, if he wants to put in some extra hours and do something like that, but he's going for Saks City and the, and the beyond, you know, and, so, when I, when I applied, that was one of the biggest things that I, that I kind of stated when I applied, is I'm looking at retention and recruitment, those are the two things we need here, we need continuity, and we need people to stay.
I agree with that, Michelle.
I think I can be that guy that get people to stay, I don't know if he'll agree or not, I'm, he, he was looking to leave when I first started, and I'll look at it, you know, and he's doing phenomenal job. You know, we pulled one of his, this guy that he worked with up there, talked to him the other day, he loves it, he wants to stay here, he wants to work for me, and I think the next guy.
Well, maybe that's our answer.
I'm hoping that's.
Maybe that's our answer, we have the right team.
But they're doing it because I'm here standing up there doing this to them, you know, I'm, I'm a big leadership type of guy.
I like to do it.
I, you know, I spent twelve years in the military, that's all I know, I might not be good at other things, but I know I'm good about leadership. I just don't want to fall behind to where we're, we're just gonna keep them in sight.
We need to have a motion to change the policy.
Yeah, I need to, I do need to bring up a couple things, because everybody at least needs to be aware of this as it pertains to some union issues. So our, our wages, uh, are established by, by the collective bargaining agreement, and if the, if the council were to decide that they would like to, to increase wages, what we would simply do is notify the union, okay?
So does that reopen, uh, bargaining with the union?
I think it does not reopen bargaining, you think it would?
Would, would we hear from other, other city departments about that? So I would, I would expect that we would, but, uh, but, does it, does it open the bargaining deal? Okay, I have one other question before we, what is the reasoning for a thirty-minute response time on call? I'm just asking, because thirty minutes to me, on call, it seems like a long time if there's an issue.
It, it, it's really not, if you, you're ten miles away, it's gonna take you twenty, thirty minutes to get out.
If you're ten miles away, it takes you twenty, thirty minutes to get out?
If I go home at three, and I lay down at four, and I get a call at four thirty, I gotta get dressed, get my shit, get out, and get down to where it's at, it's gonna take a little while, and the reason I did the thirty minutes is, county, they, they have, you know, they're, they get living county and that kind of stuff for the most part, but it'd take them thirty minutes to get from one point to point eight, that year.
I'm not a fan of thirty minutes, just for the time.
Oh, first week.
So.
I know when Amber's.
But the, the one hour, living with one hour, what are you on that?
I'm not a fan of that, just telling you, but that's, I'm less of a fan of the thirty-minute response time than a living with the one hour, and you can live anywhere and travel, you get to there as long as, and I see where you have it there, and the weather cannot be their excuse for me to leave. They gotta be responsible, look forward, I can see it happening. The one hour thing is not as big of an issue to me as thirty-minute response time on call, that to me, again, on the fire department for twenty-two years, you know, we pride ourselves in the response time that we have, you're familiar with Lakeview Fire Department, I'm sure, um, the handling service, you know, they gotta be within five-minute response time, uh.
What calls are we gonna get?
Well, what if there's a shooting at the school?
I won't make it, I, I live in town, and I won't make it for a while.
Yeah, a shooting at the school, or somebody, somebody on.
But the shit's.
Right, well, there is, because it's, the only time they're on call is from three to five.
Okay, so, is that the only time they're gonna be?
It's only like two hours.
Is that the only time they're gonna be on call?
Well, typically, yeah, but there could be other ti, I mean, I was the only one that worked Monday, so I was on call before, and then after I got off work.
So can we put, the on-call time is only going between three and five for that thirty-minute response time? Is that kind of a happy medium? And I'm only one at five, so I'm just asking you a question.
I mean, no, because what if we only have one guy that's available, and you're talking a twenty-four-hour period of time, but.
But with the four man, with the four man crew, you should.
And actually, that will, ah, yeah, that will.
I was just gonna ask, that four man crew.
Four man crew would, would be pretty.
Would be a forty-four.
And more likely, there's probably not gonna be, we can make it to where there's no one, no.
Well, that's, I guess that's a, I'm asking, if a four man crew can, they can further install on call.
So we still got the one part-time, obviously.
At this present, yeah, you're short. Yeah, and if, if you got full, full staff, um.
We, 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 we could typically go twenty-four seven, but then you're talking when vacation time comes up, somebody's sick.
But that's, that's a whole different story.
Yeah, then you'd use a reserve.
Exactly.
Or if you don't have them, then that's when on call. One other question, where are we at with our agreement, and how is that, I have no idea.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've been threatened, even when I, when I started, that they were gonna dump us into the county, so.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know about the threat, I'm just curious that.
Yeah, I, I, once a week, I hear how they're gonna go to county, and sometimes twice, so, um, the only thing I can do is try to provide them the best service possible, and hopefully, it'll change their mind.
Do they say why they're, they're saying they're gonna go to county?
I, I mean, I got my own personal opinions about, about things, so I'm not gonna, you know, skip that now, but.
I've heard, I've heard from a council member a couple issues, but I don't know if it's valid, uh, but.
So do you mind if I ask what those issues were, or what they said they were?
So I just think, that's, that's something that. I have, I have, I have some stuff broken down here, but, so what is our agreement with them, I mean, what, how much do they pay us?
For one month. So twenty hours per week, and they pay forty-five hundred bucks a month, is that?
No, it's not, thirty-seven something.
My question is, we lose that, that's less, that was less politically, or at least budgetally, that we've got to, 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 that's what I was going to.
Yeah, we should, depending on that, right, you should, right, and it, you know, is that something that?
They're, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, and we just, we gotta adjust, we still got, we still got one hour.
It's gotta be for half the hours.
Police force, so, I mean.
And, and the other side is that, is that they can, I guess they can save whatever they want, because we would hang their hat, hang our hat on the deal, they can, they can tell us, where, where, financially, they can, they can better handle.
A lot of what, law-in response is getting the bounty is inflated, or we're deflated, I don't know.
I think, I think we're doing what we need to do, well, like, I'm just worried, I've heard the same thing, that if we're gonna lose that, if it's forty grand a year, that's forty less thousand of their budget compared to, and then we're gonna raise it by how much, and you pass all this stuff, like, great.
But, I guess, we really need to focus on people like you, because that's who we, because, whether we do it for a whole twenty-four, seven, a four man crew, I think, because that's what people like you deserve.
And we have three guys in test today right now?
Yeah, three said they were gonna come, but I think one's probably have to make it. He was supposed to be older than me, uh, last weekend, and I could do it, but there were two hours. The biggest question's gonna be how they test, because I've gotten kind of the same thing from both of them, that maybe their scores aren't gonna be what they should, so if it's not, then we're at ground zero.
It's hit or miss, I mean, I mean, there's just, I mean, it's just so bad in law enforcement right now, that, so, you're lucky you get enough, you know?
So the response time, let's take that issue out for, at this time, I told us on, the other thing is that, that we got to pay with that, yeah. I really feel that people like you want a full-time police force, deserve a full-time police force.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
As for yous.
I, I think we're kind of showing up, we've got work to do, right?
Exactly, I mean, we've showed that, since you've been here, that there's a lot of work to do, here for the services of like you, um, regardless of whether, uh, the people are, uh, law-in contact or not, people like you deserve a full-time police force, and, uh, deserve twenty-four, seven coverage, and in order to provide twenty-four, seven coverage, we need, uh, more officers to do that, yeah. And there is an issue with, every time we, um, advertise for law enforcement, uh, giving quality advocates or any offense.
Yeah, it's like, so it's got.
And then retention of those officers, we have to do something, and I think, I think your attitude with retention, and keeping those guys here, and working for them, so the citizens like you don't have to worry about that, and I think is the right, correct, um, for you to, um, residency requirement at a different time, just pull through that, um, but I think those other things are.
I have a problem with.
Be an easy one.
Yes, the equipment, I think, I think the wage thing is, is a good step too, I mean, it's worth trying, um, it's not asking for the new, I guess, broken down over three years here. So I guess I would make a motion that we, um, agree to those policy changes, uh, just working out outside the residency law, just keep thinking about that, and kind of fix that part, and we do.
It's not supposed to think, this, basically, the chief showed, so, he was concerned about the half hour, my feeling is that we should, we should let him determine that half hour, and if it becomes a problem, then we address it, I think we, I think myself, I mean, they can make you look good, or they can make you look bad, you know what I'm saying?
That's true, that's true. And, and to be honest with you, we only got two people that are in that with one, and anyway, I mean, you gotta think, you know, our reserve guy lives somewhere else, um, especially, he's still trying to figure out where he's, he's gonna get to, you know, um, so, we're doing it now, you know? And we haven't had any issues, and I know what, what happens in between three and five anyways, I mean, I know what type of calls we get, and, and I've never had an issue getting a call that was.
Most of the time, it's gonna be just something that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's just, you know? And my, my ultimate goal is for anybody who comes to work for us, is they're gonna fall in love with community, and they're gonna wanna move down this way, I just don't want to force them to do it. I just want to take that off the table, let them come in and learn, let them be able to do the job, figure it out, and who knows, maybe they're not fit for any department anyways, maybe we get them here, and six months later, it'd be like, this guy's not gonna work. Well, you had him move down here, you know what I mean, now all of a sudden you're gonna say, you gotta go. We have to stop.
So Scott, do you have a number, a dollar amount number for these policies, policy changes, what it costs for a person?
It's eighty, it's eighty-four cents per hour then, for, uh, for two officers, and then. It's eighty-four cents an hour, potentially for two officers, depending on what happens here with the, with the assistant chief. You know, it's eighty-four cents per hour for one officer for, for sure, and then if the assistant chief were to happen, then, then that increase would come. Oh, twenty-five nineteen is, uh, right. So if we look at the chief's, the increase is three thirty-six, three thirty-six and above?
I thought the chief was saying it's better.
Yeah, this, that would be the assistant chief.
Let us have it broken down a little bit.
I think most of it is down to this, many people have. Does that break down a little bit?
No, I, it just.
But the rest were broken down.
Yeah.
For the, for the chief, excuse me, the assistant chief did, did increase roughly said about, uh, about seventeen fifty for, uh, officers.
So what's your assistant chief, what, what kind of duties would he be performing?
So they, they, they help out administratively. Um, obviously, he's, he's taking on a role as a kind of investigator for some high-profile cases, and he's really, he's been doing it anyways. Even before I came here, you know, he was in charge of BCI Crime Lab, the online pre-lost stuff, you know? He was doing all of that, he was managing the evidence room prior to my arrival. You know, he was, uh, the badge cad assistant administrator, so he was reviewing all the reports and sending that information to state. So this is all, that's what he was doing before I even got here. You know, and that's a lot of what assistant chief was gonna do for those type of jobs, you know? And then I got here and I kinda threw a little more on him, you know, it's like, let's see what he can take until he breaks, and then I'm not gonna lie.
Then we're lucky.
So far, he's taking a lot of chance, so.
I saw one piece right now, so.
But, but you know, like, and, and it's pretty important, when you got certain cases, you just want one guy that kinda is that guy that knows how to handle those cases.
So you wouldn't be having a problem with writing up a job description?
We actually have one for assistant chief. Center of expertise.
Remember, uh. Jeremy was assistant chief.
But we didn't stair-step the assistant chief.
No, and I don't know why, why he wouldn't.
Like, neither why he wouldn't, why he wouldn't, I mean, if he's taking on those extra duties.
So why would he have a position?
He doesn't say four.
Position.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Dave has a motion to adjust the wages for second to that motion.
The, the, uh, motion right now was to approve the policy changes excluding residents.
Yeah, that would.
If we can supply. Yeah, so it's. No, if, yeah, just, I just looking at policy change right now, so that really is, I think, the equipment is, was the, was the.
Second to that motion outside the local.
Okay, well.
Yes.
Backman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, now.
So that's, that leaves the residency requirement still un, un, unaddressed. And, and.
Now, second.
Local.
So this will be wages as, uh.
As opposed to.
All right, you ready? Logan. Logan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Backman.
Yes.
Frank.
No. You have to have a motion to, to the assistant chief.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Motion is to, to assist chief at that wage. Okay.
Logan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Backman.
Yep.
Frank.
No. About the issues?
First, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's awesome.
Okay, we do this, we have a resolution, twenty-two nineteen, setting salaries.
Now, let's start off with, with making a couple of changes to that, so this resolution's on page nine. So, uh, as we change, uh, some wages then, Cody, and so the position with them, change also to assistant chief. Cody's wage would be twenty-eight fifty-five per hour. Okay, and then Christian Bicinger is, that wage would then become, it's an eighty-four cent increase. Twenty-six four-three. Few other blanks there to fill out as, as far as, uh, wages for, for Kay and, and for Jeff. You see salary figures then for, for me and for Dean, we had hired Chris in March. And, and that would be a holdover then at seventy-two thousand. Before we get into that too much, we did one specific thing about Sue Barney as, as City Hall custodian. Sue had been hired, uh, originally as custodian of the library. And when she was hired for that position with the library, pay was established by the library board at twelve dollars and thirty cents. Sue cleans here at City Hall now, but she does not do the library anymore and has, has dropped a lot of her, of her other work. But she does still have some other clients, the other clients, uh, the wage, uh, is twenty dollars per hour. And she would make that request of the, of the city room too. Your thoughts? What is a, what is a normal wage for a custodian?
I can speak on that behalf, my wife cleans, paints, but she's getting twenty dollars an hour to clean. So how many times?
Yeah, how many hours?
It's, it's two to three hours a week here. Any, any concerns with that? If you, if we didn't give her the toilet grid, hire somebody else, it all actually would be at twenty bucks.
Yeah. But she does a good job. I think she'll, she can.
We'll, we'll continue to work with her.
There's always something.
Yeah, there's. Um, so is, hey, look at the, uh, uh, wage then for, for Kay and for Jeff. On page ten, there, that shows, uh, what the past wage history has been, so you can see Kay's current wage right now is twenty, twenty-one seventy. Jeff is at thirty-one sixty-three. If you flip to page eleven, then you can see what, uh, what percentage, uh, wage increases and stuff that might.
The apparent, it's four, three percent, just like the other, so.
And, I, you know, I appreciate that, that's, that's great, the change of bucks for Kay a little bit, I think, uh, still continue to do, maybe a little more for Kay. I know, um, just compare her to, to, uh, some, some other administrative positions in other communities, and, and I know the type of work that she does. But, but other, other communities, they, they still take that, um, I mean, we do a little better, three percent.
Three percent for me, the cost of living, isn't it?
Well, I'm waiting for the Biden bill.
Yeah, I was gonna head off. Kay, did you have a figure?
I didn't, I, um, I looked at, you're gonna pay the cleaning lady twenty bucks an hour, and I make twenty-one fifty for twenty-three years' worth of service. Um, and everything that I do, so, um.
Most of us wait to be later than that. So you want to leave for twenty bucks an hour? So you're at twenty-one now, is it?
And a twenty-one.
Twenty-one seventy.
That's what I'm gonna be paying.
She had a fifteen point four percent increase in last.
That was bringing me from eighteen dollars to twenty-one fifty.
Twenty-two fifty's a better number?
Twenty-three fifty's a better number.
I, uh.
Anybody else? Twenty-three fifty?
I, I just tell you, my, I hate to start signaling everybody out, because the only thing I'm saying.
And I guess through.
He's always, he wanted them for seven.
I think Kay does a great job, but I'm just saying. I don't know if I'm gonna leave in here.
But he wanted to twenty-five, twenty-one, twenty-two.
I told her twenty for fifty. She knew I was joking.
I don't think you're fifty something, kid.
Are you over a quarter of two thousand dollars? Yes. It's five hundred and forty dollars, we wasted five hundred and forty dollars tonight, so.
I'm only worth one chance again.
That's coming down, five fifty dollars.
Thank you. I suggest we give her the three, the twenty-three fifty, we just raised a guy's wages that hasn't been here but a couple of years, like, quite a bit. She has not proved this wrong in any manner.
No, she has not.
If you look at how far apart Jerry and Lightning went, I'm at thirty-one, Cameron left at forty-one dollars. And then I took this assistant job and I busted my butt for a year and a half. I don't even get to look at it, so, I guess I'm worth it again.
Look what, look what happened to the campground manager.
That's not even the same issue.
For a buck.
I'll put it, if you put my, uh, application out.
Yeah, twenty-five bucks an hour is the real minimum wage right now, that's just barely a living. You're thirty-one Jeff now?
No, I didn't know that we weren't looking at you yet, I just thought we were running you on Kate's first text. I, I think that we have room.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Do the next shot, Jeff. So you have to go plug in forty-six?
Well, I'm more than thirty-one, I mean, I'm ten dollars away from any other journeyman I would like. And I'll take it on a lot of responsibility. I mean, I can give it back to Dean, and he can be able to lead her, and I will do what he asks me.
I think you've done a good job.
Well, what can the council put a number in?
Are we done with Kay then?
Yeah, we're. Okay, I'm gonna go again.
Is it thirty-one forty-three or thirty-one sixty-three?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three, but, uh, thirty, twenty cents of that.
Kay and I have all, long when, uh, this is when you're dealing, when we, when we have done percentage. And I've been here two years left for Kay and Scott. And I didn't, we all know, I didn't ask to be in my position. I had two people leave a week apart, so I was the lone guy for two and a half months.
Change one left, how much?
Four forty-one. With less health insurance, keep that in mind.
What objections are there?
Yes, we can't change.
You didn't have to treat him, you didn't have to locate, because they hired all that, I mean, this job, the, the duties of this job are different.
I'm not arguing that, but they are different in the other aspects of things too. Everybody talks about the dollar amount, we left for dollar amount, dollar amount, well, we have the best health insurance dollars for employees in the surrounding area and other communities by far, and we gotta take that into consideration, the cost of that. It's a total compensation package, it's ours. I'm not saying you're at worth sixty dollars an hour if, if Cameron was getting seventy, but he's not getting the same benefit back.
My, my whole thing is Dale, you was talking about retaining people and how far away they are from things, that. All I'm seeing is farther and farther, and you're gonna run out of that. I can, I can retire two years, five, one, two. And then you gotta have a journeyman to run your department. And you're not gonna get your two guys you got here now for your journeys in two years.
I'm just saying that when we compare hour per hour, we gotta compare everything. I understand that, that's what I'm saying.
And once it wasn't a pass, say, two years, you, you're on some journey. You gotta remember. Okay, he's, he's trying to get a number. Look at that, thirty-six point five.
I was looking at thirty-three.
I was looking at thirty-eight.
I was looking at thirty-seven.
Mike, what do you think?
I don't expect to make more than Dean. Just, everything lands on this holding floor. Jeff does a lot, I'm just, I'm just trying not to be so damn far apart. So you'd be happy at thirty-three. Started. Just asking a question. Most corporations didn't give over three percent, some gave less than two.
Some what?
Corporations. For raises.
Portabel gave two and a half. I make a motion that, uh, we go to thirty-four. Yeah. We gotta wait till we move on, right?
Oh.
Sorry, Mike said we can do a preservation.
Will that work, Jeff? You really don't have anybody batting in your corner like the police force did, so.
I was just listening to everybody.
No, he does way more.
Oh, I know he does.
Than what you guys even know.
I was, I was just listening to him. Make my nothing doesn't have a solid base in the mountain, it doesn't. And I don't know how else to tell, you know, not just Jeff, but the rest of the employees, how valuable they are, but, you know. I mean.
It's retaining, like Chris said.
Exactly.
Bill used to preach it and preach it.
We gotta do, we have to do what we have to do, so our people aren't looking elsewhere.
Why are they being happy when they're happy? Otherwise, they will be looking elsewhere.
I'd like to ministry hiring, too, that's my point.
26.
Yeah, they made a motion up 34.
No, but we're not doing motions, we've got to.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'll go along with 34. Anybody else on the right with 10 dollars, 34?
34.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to Scott. Again, Scott definitely wants everybody to see those.
Yes, he does.
You got a spot to drop to read every clue?
Scott, 34.
Scott.
But like you, Mary, it's been over the beginning of the town.
It's been over the beginning of the town. So where are you at now, Scott?
71.
You're the guy in charge of everybody else? So 73.5. How's that sound? Maybe that's my.
Now, 36.
36. So after you go higher. And you should do 74 to the upper.
75 to the, what's percentage for us?
That's all I can give you. Now we're down to Dean. Dean does a lot. He's very responsive when he's on. He's actually come out, I asked her recently to go to 10 minutes for a half. It's not really much fun to be.
74,500.
Oh, 64,000, neighbor. I knew it was coming.
Okay, is everybody happy with the bikes?
That's a 74,500.
Yeah. Oh, no, most of them, 22.19. That's a number still there. Most of them, 2. Okay?
Second.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
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 Thanks, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I thought that brings us to 175.
Dean, that's. What I would really like to do, I just wanna talk through, uh, through these maps that are included in your, in your packet. And then we can relay some of the, some of the information from our committee meeting on, on last Thursday. We might wanna start with that. If Mike or Dale or Mayor, if you wanna give a little update on it.
Dale, why don't you, Dale?
Well, I think everybody at that meeting, all the landlords are in agreement, we have an issue. All the way from Lot 20, all the way down to Sparky's, and then across the road to Mr. Hauser's ground. And everybody was in agreements that something needs to be done. Because we're gonna be dumping more water down there. Shaven and then we're filling in more ground, shaving, shaving and shredder. And everybody was on the agreement that, you know, all the water's gonna come from the west down to the east. That pool, that area, then we gotta get it to go to that creek. This engineer studied it, he got his proposal, 30, 30 inch culvert. But the conversation that day was something larger to make sure we plan for the future. Larry did say he'd give us these with to go through the ground, correct? And I think everybody at that meeting was in agreements, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do the right, we're gonna have a banding on, fix it like it should be and rid of the problem. We got a break. And Shaven's group was willing to give us these with to come through there with them tiles that dump behind John Craft's house, what is that, East Street?
Third Street, coming off Third Street.
The design circle and, well, there's the one up there on East Street where Craft lives.
Talking about dumping water from the campground area and the museum down there.
But I'm saying again, get that water through to this drainage area so we can get it to the north, we get it to the creek. I think everybody was in agreements that day, right, Larry? That we're gonna do, we're gonna do it right. And there were some issues on coming across Lake Street, they wanted to put equalization, somebody mentioned an equalization fight through. That's not the right thing to do. So that committee that day, or us guys, kind of decided, you know, we gotta fix it, we don't get an issue, we gotta fix it right now, was our answer, fix it, fix it.
This, which got one going from 175 to the creek.
Yeah, and then part of the conversation was the state drove by one day when there was a meeting there, the state would participate or look into it. It was talked about, but they don't do anything fast. But I don't think, you know, unfortunately, I don't think we can do anything fast either. This is all in my opinion. I think it needs to be done, done right. I don't think a 30 inch tile's big enough. I think it needs to be a 36 or 42, planned for the future. But I don't wanna jump into it without reaching out to the state and seeing if I can get some help from the state so we have to fund it all or put someone. And some of the landlords were opposed to helping out, if it was done right, it depended on the cost, of course, but everybody wanted to see it done right.
And we did from this now, Jeff. We're gonna have to do from 25.
Kevin, who do you want?
We're not gonna need to stay in the office. We've never gotten to the office.
Kevin, this is not just a city issue, this is a state issue, too.
They're not in the office. They won't even participate in the, in the town on the road, they didn't wanna help.
Well, they haven't even gave you a look at, see what the need for that.
No, and we talked about, we talked to them, what, six months ago, we were like, they said they'll look into it as a left, whoever.
So it's ready to transfer this? I mean, it's.
Because you're a developer.
You're qualified for, like, CDG. There's, there's, I guess, that's what. See, wouldn't there be any sort of structure that might fit some point there?
I'm all in favor of moving forward, but I don't wanna give up any assistance, any assistance that we can give. I wanna do it right.
And as far as state, you know, the guy driving down the highway, you gotta say so anyway.
He was the head guy. He was the head guy.
Alexa, turn it off.
Yeah. According to Tommy Schrader and Shaven, he was the head guy. And I think Scott was here at the meeting.
No.
So, yeah, 'cause they were standing around and he drove by the road and just turned around and says, you guys have a project going on here? And he stood and stopped, and he's the one, he was the head guy, 'cause we just needed to do a project. And that's coming from Shaven and Tommy Schrader. Now, I don't know who else would stand there.
I think Dean was there, when Nate West, Nate Westfall was talking, that's his name.
That's one. So I don't, I think at least I'd like us to pursue looking for assistance if we can, we can.
Is he from the north?
No, he's, uh, he's a regional, he's the regional background here. Um, sure, probably.
And then, it's like, that's half, that's, it's been up to here.
They don't move quickly, but it's still in his market's corner.
But you had a, you had a cost for this from 175 to, correct, Dean, you have from the engineer?
Yep.
It's in your back.
It's here.
That's a 30 inch tile.
That's right, yeah, yeah. And it's, yeah, it's 157, but with contingency, 181. I would like to go through this with you, take, let's take a little bit of time and, and go through, through this engineering, uh, these few pages of engineering. Let's just really show you where you're at. No, because page 12 is, is, is real interesting to see the drainage areas that do all end up then basically greening right down to the car wash. And you add up all of those, those acres and you, it gets up to 160 acres or so, but that, uh, from all of those drainage areas, they, they end up basically down to, down to this one. And as we look at things, you know, potentially, uh, whether it's campground or certainly whether it's the Outlet 20, those, those areas are all included within this, within this drainage area also. Page 13, just real briefly on this, because that, all the, all the disc is doing is showing the existing shots about what's, what's on Highway 175 as it, uh, right around the Lake Street intersection. And they had shot this and gave us a proposal then about, Dale had mentioned that, about an equalization tile through there. Basically, think of it as a culvert, but, but it does not have positive flow then on it, it's flat. And, and water pushes through there then, as water's able to push it through. So, uh, most, very likely then to, to silt in. And there's some real concerns about that, it's not a preferred way to take a look at that. The preferred way, as, as proposed from the, the engineers, is on page 14. And let's start on the left side of the page, there's where you're at, Outlet 20. And, uh, and then to the right of Outlet 20 is Bonhamover's toy storage building, okay? Now, as you look, uh, just at the green, uh, the green box, or the one, uh, one with the green frame. What they're talking about there through Outlet 20 and, and past Bonhamovers is just basically ditch work. So it's regrading the ditch and provides positive slope then, uh, from, from west to, to east. And goes through that culvert there at Bonhamovers, continuing to do some additional grading work, which involves some fill in, in this area. So that it's just flowing across land until it gets to that Lake Street intersection. If you ever see any of the bigger green boxes on Lake Street, think of those as intakes. So this would have them redoing the intakes on, on Lake Street and then having a couple of additional surface intakes. But this would propose to have about 400 linear feet of this new storm sewer, which would be built so that it would drain from, uh, from the west side of Lake Street. And has a positive grade on that, so it drains at least over to, to the ditch, to the north of Bonhamover's truck shed. There's newly renovated truck shed there, where you could see what we get in the, in the ditch and continue to surface flow through. So that's, uh, that's the proposal on that. Then just looking at page 15, that's what, what the mayor was talking about, about just a, a straight line shot from, uh, from the low spot there, basically around the car wash. Uh, then, and with, this proposes a 30 inch tile that would be 40 and a foot of this 30 inch tile that would go out and dump into Indian Creek. So as you look there, uh, left and right of the green line, there's an existing eight inch in there, which is Larry's field tile, I think. And, and then you also have this 12 inch. Uh, and that 12 inch is the only one that serves that area right now for drainage purposes.
And would you tie, tie those tiles into that line?
They'd be independent of that. Basically, my tile system is engineered to take care of my own water. Problem I, that ends up down there is it gets flooded because of the, they can't take it away easily.
Well, hard rain won't take yours away either, but you, your tile will within a day or two. I mean, it, it does puddle, but.
The key to that is you got about 24 hours to get the water off your crops, otherwise they're gonna die.
Right.
Then the part I know everybody's really interested in is looking to that next page, page 16. This is all put together as cost estimates as, as far as estimates for Outlet 20 then, too. You see it struck out that, that top section, that is, that will be all we'll look on the Outlet 20 property, uh, not directly pertaining to drainage. But then the bottom of the page, is that page 16, 16 is down?
17.
17.
That's where the, got the level order down and it was.
It's on 16 here.
All right, yeah, before the drawing.
Page 16 is before the, that big page and 17 is after. I got out of, out of order. So that, that page 16 is showing the cost before that proposal worked up to 30. And I'm out of, it's out of order, it's, it's before the big, the big thing. I got out of order. Sorry. So, yeah, so we're looking at page 16. That is, uh, that's that proposed work then crossing Lake Street and that 400 feet of storm sewer. And they're assuming that to be about 24 inch storm sewer. Um, so Bob and Nate Moore had talked about the drainage through their, their property. And right now, there's one big hole, basically dug in the ditch that where, where water drains in, into this hole there. And they, their ideal situation would be that they have a drainage system through there and they're able to cover that up. And this would then be just another access on.
It was covered up a few years ago and the state came back out. And it's actually right on the end of the alley.
Yeah.
When it was moved out. So it was, so the state, that's the situation.
Well, they've lived in there.
State's got an issue along there and they need to take responsibility for it, might feel.
And then flipping to page 17, you see the cost estimate on that outside, that outfall line up to any increase.
I thought Moore's talked about, they wanted that to run at least to the end of the building to the east. Because it's, um, you're always in this by the building.
Correct, they, they did mention that.
And through their east driveway.
Correct.
Yeah, these, yeah, yeah, at least their east driveway.
If that would have to be changed, that would, that would be a plan change.
I would think that you'd wanna wa, run your storm sewer off that Zion addition and from John Craft's underground, under Shaven's ground, or Shaven would wanna run it underground and hook it into the Sumo, too.
I guess these are all aspects of, of the project that we could take a look at. I guess, you know, what's the council's thoughts on this then as a project? Um, the committee of the landowner is very much in favor of proceeding along with the project. Um, and I guess the question would be, would, would you look at doing this as one large project? Would you look at it as a phased project where you do an outfall line first and, and some additional work later? What's, have you thought about that? Well, I did, at the meeting, we started, we talked about starting that car wash, we'll use that as a reference point, going out through the field and get rid of the dirt first, we gotta get that done first. And then maybe.
So that would be phase one.
I think it's a, I think it's a phase process, yeah.
So if you do that as phase one, then you could still try to work the state as your, consider it.
as your potential, as long as the place do have, shows as a project to, which could.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to get permission from the state to underneath the road, Dave.
They will, they will, they will, they will very much be involved with what's going on.
Then at the same time, we might, yeah, we could look for, 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 something that could.
Yeah, we can, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll fill them up.
I guess, uh, it senses here that it's kinda start with phase one and.
We need to make a motion to, to get a phase, you know, get started so we can have planning places fall, and Larry gets his crops out of the field so we can.
Um, if, if, if this is what the, the council is, would really like to take a look at, I think what I would really like to do is probably get the, the engineer down here, and, and we would work through the proposed plans that they have right now, but looking at any tweaks that you guys could look at also.
Well, yeah, I, I'm not in favor of that, you take, taking that tile instead of a thirty either thirty-six or forty-two for future down the road. Does that make sense?
The other, the other thing that, that you'll have to make a decision on sometime, is just keep this in the back of your mind then, is the type of tile that you would use. These plans proposed to use a plastic. Just remember that you may pipe your adult, but it's significantly more expensive.
Plastic would be better on that fourteen hundred foot road that we're now, because of the seams and whatnot, you have, you have, great weight? Whitey's got a seam making in his place now.
We're on the tile plant there, uh, what's their, what, what are they doing down there?
You know what, that was, that was pointed out to me, and I, I did, uh, went down today and at least looked at, but I had not talked to them, I don't have.
He said they just couldn't replace it, they could work on it, I thought it, it looked like a big hole. Are they making it, something that Scott works on?
So we need a motion to move forward with phase one of one seventy-five drainage project to get the engineer back up here and tweak the plans, is that what we, I saw make that.
I'll second that.
Back to you.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
The council procedures manual.
So, did, did you get that, Rod, as far as that goes, so we're, we were, uh, the council had made a motion then to, to move forward with this project, we look at it as a phased project, the first phase being to put that outfall line out to the, to the creek, so that's, that's where we're at then, then for the moment.
Talking to me?
I'm talking to you.
Yeah, I heard that, um, that's good, the, I did, I do wanna add two cents in that, uh, Mr. Baumhover and I went up to the property that we're looking to develop. Uh, it's kind of a swamp up there, I think this is essential to get that area developed as well as the rest of the highway down the future, like they're saying, prepare for the future, 'cause that's where you're gonna see some growth, that isn't gonna happen unless we get the water out of there, 'cause it becomes a swamp, it has to percolate down through, there's nowhere for it to go until it goes into the water table, so, thank you for putting this forward, 'cause I think that's essential to that whole area.
Great, thank you. We had a, the concept brought up about, uh, about a city council procedures manual, and I had presented this table of contents to you, to you last time, well, this time I included the packet along with it to show you what, actually what the, what the policy would be, and I guess I'm just real interested in the city council feedback about, uh, about the general concept of a, of a council procedures manual, and it stipulates a lot of, of the way things would be done, and, uh, interested in your comments on that, as far as, as whether you'd be interested in having things stipulated, you wanna stay a little more loosey-goosey, what's, what's your thoughts?
You, you got this from Iowa?
This one's from Iowa. I, I have several examples, and, and they're, they range from, from being a couple pages long to, this one's sixteen pages long, but, you know, and then I tell you, as you read through this thing, well over half of, of this policy is a restatement of state public on, on procedures and stuff. And when you get down to actually the, the amount of, of decisions that would be made by the, the city council about this, it's a lot less than sixteen pages. So, I'm just interested in your thoughts about that, whether it's something you wanna go down this, down this path, or what you think is something you could look at, what you think is some changes like F, under, year, year, the third agenda test, all public areas should be scheduled for five thirty. Oh, yeah, this, yeah, this, this Iowa policy, you would just go through, use it as a boilerplate and, and update things as, as you would think would be appropriate. I guess my, my only take on this is if this is something that you think you wanna do, it, uh, certainly would require a special, special council meeting.
I believe we need to do it because a few of these meetings have gotten out of hand. I, I've had a lot of comments, you know, from citizens about how the meetings are being handled.
I agree. Is there something you want to, uh, try to set a, a special meeting date and take a look at it? Is something you would like to jump into here real quickly, or what's, what's your thinking?
Need time there.
Yeah, when, when might you, I mean, we can have a special meeting next Monday, if there's something you wanna, you wanna look, you wanna look at.
I'm open.
Could be gone.
Yeah.
Let's put, let's look at, uh, we'll find a date to work from. If you'd be gone and then it's, the fourth and fifth was your regular meetings, and it'll be like eleven, but July, it'll be a, a Monday, or we could look at some other dates, or some other days of the week.
Do you have to have it on a Monday?
Nope, maybe it's no answer. Um, I, if it's stay away from the Thursday or Friday.
Or Saturday or Sunday. July twenty-five. That's on, uh, Monday, we have no regular council meeting, everybody will be back in town. I probably didn't do it, but.
Oh, you don't?
And we have knee surgery again on the twenty-first.
Are you really, yeah, that's right.
July's tough, though. It's really summer. I mean, this is a, a real pressing issue, but it's a very important issue. Motion to go into closed session, so we're, what's that? Go call.